I'll call to order the city regular council meeting of November 20, 2017, and invite Adam and Brandon of Boy Scout Troop 709 to the rostrum. And ask those in the audience who would like to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance to please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Adam and Brandon. Great job. We'll move now to audience comments and a few comments about audience comments. Citizen comments are an important part of the public process. We take them seriously and factor them into the decisions we make. Anyone from the public who wishes to comment on tonight's agenda items or other topics should do so at this time. Just point out that we do have a public hearing later in the agenda to talk about the 2018 budget. So if you're here to speak to that issue, the appropriate time would be at the public hearing. This public comment period is not a question and answer period. If there is a need to get back in contact with you and you have not signed up, please sign up after you speak on the yellow sheet or clipboard on the table in front of me. When recognized, use the lectern and speak into the microphone. State your name, address, and any relationship to the city. Limit your comments to five minutes. Submit any written comments to the city clerk. A visual timer has been placed on the lectern. When the light turns yellow, you have one minute remaining. And the timer will sound to indicate the end of your allotted time. So again, citizen comments, written and verbal, are an important aspect of the public process. The city takes them seriously. And we thank members of the public for taking the time to address us. And with that, I would ask if anyone has signed up to speak this evening?
There are none.
Is there anyone desiring to speak? Steve, come on down.
Good evening. Steve Pereira, Old Town for about 10 years. So first of all, happy Thanksgiving in advance to all of you. Wanted to put that out there. Second thing, thank you, the Halloween trolley ride. I think that was kind of a cool themed event to have. So I just wanted to say thanks to all those involved in having that. Next item was AB 7515. It was a Port of Seattle Economic Development Partnership Grant. I guess I'm disagreeing with item number three to send people to this Global Passport World Mobile Congress Forum. It doesn't seem like the best use of Sadeev Isaguat taxpayer or funds to do that. So I'd like to see a more direct correlation of how that's helping Isaguat specifically. I'm going to jump ahead to the public hearing on the budget. I'd like to see the trees returned to the Old Town area. And I guess I don't really care one way or another about a dog park, but I'd like to see city parks in each neighborhood before I see city parks for dogs. I'd also like to make sure the dog park isn't near a body of water where we're running off or running into the public waterways. The levy and revenue source, AB 7392. It just, I'd like to get back to the idea where we're seeing if there is an impact from regional growth. Are we getting public dollars out of this? What's the benefit? Are we subsidizing things like traffic and roads? I'd like to see a direct correlation. This is where development is helping us and where it's falling short. And I'd like to see that in a public forum. Next item, AB 7491 Legislative Agenda. I like the cleaned up language on the affordable housing and the contributions for the arch. So that was a good thing. I believe that there maybe could or should there be improvements though that talk about state law that allows for the assessment of development fees in high cost areas like the King County that maybe aren't faced by other areas. So there could be their state law or state code that allows better use of local jurisdictions to have increased taxing authority to, a way to contribute to that. I believe that there could also be some ways for, in the case of Isaguat School District, it has jurisdictions from outside of Isaguat that contribute to schools. Could there be assessments to make sure that they're impacting or charging development fees in those jurisdictions, not just the jurisdiction where they reside in? So contribute on a more equal basis. The last item I wanted to mention was, and I forget what the AB, this is on the, I guess, proposed open council seat. There'll be coming up two questions I leave with you all for consideration. One is if there's a contested seat, is the second place voter or elected person automatically seated if the first top seeded candidate doesn't get the majority votes when the top candidate isn't able to fulfill their seat? The second is that should there be consideration given to, let's say, a voter or another candidate who ran in a different position that didn't get an opening but received a larger number of seats? Should they receive additional consideration for filling a seat in an open seat? Not just have it decided by the city council, but have it decided what is a reflection of what the people's will for a good candidate, a certain threshold number of votes or a way to consider that? Not just voted by the will of the seven people on the council, but on the will, reflected in the will of the people? Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Anyone else desiring to speak this evening? Anyone else? Seeing none, then, audience comments are closed. And we'll now move to committee reports, starting with Bill Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Short report, on the 8th of November, I was at the Emergency Management Advisory Committee meeting. And we worked to adjust grant funding for emergency supplies and services. There was a shift in what we're able to do with that. On the 17th, last Friday, it was the Eastside Transportation Partnership. The main thing they were working on, working long on was their 2018 legislative agenda. So that's a lot of discussion on that. And then coming up on December 1st, I'll be attending the State Public Works Board meeting in Olympia. That concludes my report. No agenda for that one yet.
Paul? No report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Isaguat City Council Services and Safety Committee met on Tuesday, November 14. And we had an update on the teen cafe. We had a bill on amending school impact fees. We moved it to bring it back to full council as regular business. We saw Agenda Bill 7389, the art grants recommendations, which we moved forward recommending on consent. And then multifamily housing property tax exemption. That was informational, as was Economic Development Annual Report. Then the Sound Cities Association Public Issues Committee met the next evening at Renton City Hall. And the biggest issue that we had was the regional legislative agenda. And I am happy to say that it passed unanimously, but with a couple of abstentions from folks who hadn't had it, been able to bring it to their full councils. The Regional E-911 Strategic Plan Scoping Leadership Group met for the final time, it turns out. Thursday, November 9th, we approved basically everything we needed to approve in terms of a finance plan and a technology plan and a governance plan. And so those are getting final write-up before submission to the county. But in the end, once we got past the architecture questions that we had in the technology side, it was a fairly straightforward conversation. There continues to be an ongoing funding challenge beyond 2022 to sometime between 2022 and 2024. The funding mechanism that's in place for E-911 will run out of money. And so there was discussion about whether there would be some sort of follow-on body that would help the county council. Ultimately, it's Kathy Lambert and her friends. It's their responsibility. And, but, we'll all be impacted by it. So there may be something coming down the road on alternate funding mechanisms for what's coming. Then finally, the King County Growth Management Policy Council is supposed to meet Wednesday, November 29 at 4:00 p.m. But we are considering rescheduling it because the SCA annual meeting is occurring that evening. And I'm not sure that I'm going to have anything close to a quorum of the SCA caucus to the GMPC, of which I am the chair. I'm chair of the caucus, not of the GMPC. Anyhow, so that's probably going to get rescheduled. This concludes my report.
Thank you. Eileen?
No report this evening?
Mary Lou?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On November 17th, I met with the Chamber of Commerce as the Greater Isaguat Chamber of Commerce as the council liaison. The topics that I brought up to talk about was the results of the elections, discussion of the transportation benefit district that it was in, infrastructure committee, but that it could be part of our budget discussions coming up, a potential parking enforcement proposal that might be discussed at budget, an update on the moratorium and one of the last significant work items that's currently in progress, which is district or neighborhood visions. That the city council was adopting their 2018 legislative agenda. That infrastructure committee had an item that they were looking at mini cell tower franchise agreement and a discussion of school district, continuing discussion of school district impact fees. They had no items that they wanted me to bring back to the council. Second item that I just wanted to provide as an update is that during transition, Mayor Butler has set up a series of transition meetings in the region and with staff. And I'm very grateful for this early entry and learning about all of the different work that's being done. So I just wanted to thank the mayor for that.
Thank you. Stacy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tomorrow, Isaguat City Council's Land and Shore Committee has a special meeting. 6:30 here, council chambers, and we have one item on the agenda. It's Agenda Bill 7405, end of certain development agreements relating to Isaguat Highlands and Talis. And that's my report.
Thank you. There will be an executive session held this evening to discuss pending and potential litigation per RCW 42.30, .110, per N1, per NI. It is expected to take about five minutes and no action will be taken. On November the 9th, I attended the PSRC Transportation Policy Board meeting where we approved the release for public comments for projects recommended for funding through PTSC's or PSRC's 2017 transportation alternatives. Of interest is, including in that release is funding for Newport Way non-motorized improvements between SR 900 to Southeast 54th Street. In addition, we discussed the 2017 Transit Integration Report. And with that, that concludes my report. Moving now to the consent calendar, I'd ask if the accounts payables and payroll for November 20th have been reviewed? Okay.
Somebody has.
Someone has. Oh, thank you then. With that, I'd ask the clerk to read the consent calendar into the record.
Great, thank you. The consent calendar was distributed to council in advance for study. If authorized, council action will occur by a single motion regarding the following items. Item A seeks approval of accounts payable and payroll dated November 20th. Items B, C, and D seek approval of minutes for the special council committee work sessions of October 30th and November 1st, as well as the regular meeting of November 6. Item E, AB 7401, Senior Center Long Term Operation, seeks referral to Council Services and Safety Committee. Item F, AB 7503, Short Flat and Boundary Line Adjustment. City-owned parcel number 2724069008, formerly references King County Island Parcel. This seeks referral to King, excuse me, this seeks referral to the Council Land and Shore Committee. Item G, AB 7510, Port of Seattle Economic Development Partnership Grant. This seeks acceptance. That concludes the reading.
Does any council member desire to remove any item on the consent calendar for consideration under regular business? Stacy?
I move to adopt the consent calendar as presented.
Second?
Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? It carries unanimously. Moving now to Agenda Bill 7393, 2018 Budget. The same comments that I mentioned before regarding public comment apply. And with that, I'll ask Jennifer Olson, our Director of Finance, to provide an overview of the 2018 proposed budget.
Thank you, Mayor Butler. The 2018 budget was proposed by you on October 2nd and filed with the city clerk. I'd like to do a brief overview of that. And then there is a public hearing in order. And the administration recommends continuing that public hearing until the December 4th council meeting. The proposed budget is based on parameters identified by the mayor. Those include financial sustainability, maintaining community safety, focusing on quality over quantity, post-moratorium plans, staff development, investment in technology, new or expanded sources, maintaining our existing assets, and limiting the number of new proposed staff. The budget includes operating allocations for a continuing growing community in transition. Capital investments are based on the 2018 through 2022 five-year capital improvement plan. The budget is available at City Hall and the library, as well as online the city's website. The budget is created in accordance with the financial management policy. This was updated earlier in 2017. The financial policy has objectives to set forth financial principles, reduce economic environment risk, maintain financial capacity for defined levels of service, ensure legal compliance, and offer financial transparency. The budget is created, again, with regards to the financial management policy. Some of those key benchmarks in the policy include a reserve level specifically for the general fund. There's a target range of a reserve at 15% to 20%. The budget is meeting this expectation with a proposed ending fund balance around 34%. One thing to note, that special revenue debt funds, capital project funds, the reserves by nature, those funds are expected to be used based on council goals and objectives. The financial policy also identifies a balanced budget, meaning that in the general fund, current expenditures should not exceed current revenues. And that means that the proposed or forecasted revenues that were identified should be able to cover the proposed expenditures in that current year. And the general fund budget does that. So just a quick recap of all the funds in the budget. This includes the general fund, which is a major operating fund, special revenue funds, debt funds, capital project funds, and enterprise funds, as well as some agency funds and internal service funds. The largest portion of sources for all funds comes from charges for services at 32% of the budget. That means that that includes utility, those business or proprietary-like funds where we have large operations for water, sewer, and stormwater. The second largest category of sources in the budget includes taxes at 31%. And the next largest source then comes from transfers in. And that means that there is money shifting from fund to fund for specific purposes. Overall, all sources include over $1.9 million for 2018. On the expenditure side, the budget includes allocations totaling $137 million. The largest portion of the budget includes costs for operating, followed by salaries and benefits at 27%. And then we have capital projects or those investments that were identified as part of the five-year plan for 2018, about 22% of the overall budget. And then again, transfers out. And that's that shifting of money for resources from one fund to the next. All funds include a change or an expected change in ending fund balances. The general fund is expected to increase the ending fund balance. Special revenue funds are intended to be declining because there is using essentially cash on hand. Debt service funds are designed to pay down our debt obligations. Our capital project funds are the most challenging with regards to cash flow because they encompass multi-year spending on large capital investments, such as parks or transportation projects. Our enterprise funds are proposed to utilize some ending fund balance as well, based on the system plans for those utilities. And our internal service funds are intended to use resources that have been set aside for funds such as our facilities, our fleet, and our information technology funds. For the general fund specifically, this changes with regards to the sources. Taxes are the largest portion of our revenues in the general fund at about 69%. And there's a number of taxes that go into that category. The largest ones are sales tax, BNO tax, and utility tax. Then we've got the other, or the next largest source of revenue, that comes from charges for goods and services. So that includes our park and recreation fees and our charges for development services. On the general fund uses of those funds, the largest category we have is for personnel and benefits. That's a little over half of our spending. The other large category includes our operating costs. And those also include costs for, or the general fund include costs for professional services at about 7% of the general fund. And then we have those transfers out. In large part, the transfers out from the general fund go to the street operating fund and the debt fund for that non-voted debt or the LTGO or councilmatic issued bonds. Overall expenditures in the general fund proposed are a little over $50 million. The 2018 general fund balance, as I stated, is expected to increase. This is a proposed budgeted increase in ending fund balance. You can see the comparison there on the right side of this chart where this identifies our financial policy reserve targets. That maximum, that gold line at 20% is a little over $10 million. And the floor, minimum 15%, is a little over $7 million. So this is one of those numbers that as we currently are in the process of taking in revenues and paying bills for 2017, this is a fluid number and is an estimate. And the important piece is to look at the overall impact from revenues over expenditures when we're looking at budgets. Some 2018 budget highlights, I'll go quickly through those. We've identified property taxes based on prior council actions. And tonight, we'll also be talking about that proposed levy. The budget is proposed to increase 1% for the regular levy. And the excess levy is budgeted to cover that voter-approved debt obligation. We have new sources for park and recreation, expanded services, proposed tech fees, and other miscellaneous revenues that the administration has identified for 2018. The budget proposes a bond anticipation note for temporary financing of unfunded capital projects requiring sourcing or long-term sourcing. And the budget also includes utility rate increases as per the five-year rate plan. 2018 staffing proposals include three new police officers, one communication supervisor, and expanding some administrative support. In public works operation, it proposes to expand the emergency coordinator and expand stormwater and PDS maintenance work through the use of overtime for employees. In the finance department, the budget proposes one new accountant and a department restructure. In the information technology department, one new ERP solutions architect. In the parks department, proposes a department restructure. And in the executive department, expanding the neighborhood engagement coordinator position. 2018 initiative studies and other general operations that have been proposed includes an energy efficiency and solar feasibility study, mobility master planning, Old Town Parking, mitigation fee review, and sign code update. It proposes to increase the arch parity contribution, to implement the strategic planning effort, to finish the class and compensation study, to initiate a performance management work, to plan an expanded council retreat, and for some space planning in our public facilities. The budget also includes a new park turf replacement transfer from the general fund to the Parks Capital Project Fund. It proposes to expand senior services, community center programs, as well as accommodate for an increase in the Eastside Fire and Rescue Partner Contribution. In 2017, the council revamped the capital budget process and approved a 2018 through 2022 five-year capital budget. The spending authorization for 2018 projects is included in the proposed budget. You can see in the column under 2018, there's approximately $28.5 million for capital investments, largely in part for transportation initiatives and park projects. This is kind of hard to see, but this is a list of those 2018 projects that we've identified for capital investment. The council has been deliberating the 2018 budget through work sessions that were held on October 12, the 30th, November 1st, and the 15th. And the next budget work session is scheduled for Monday, November 27. So with that, the agenda bill is presented to the council. The recommended action is for council to conduct the public hearing and then continue that to the December 4th council meeting. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there questions? Thank you. With that, I will open the public hearing at 7:28 and ask if anyone has signed up to speak. Is there anyone in the audience who has not signed up desiring to speak this evening? David?
David Kapler, 255 Southeast Andrews. I'll be quick because I'm pretty ignorant of the budget, to be honest, and haven't followed it like I should have. But two items. Next door, last night, somebody commented on next door about concerns about handicap parking and felt there was non-enforcement of it. And it just kind of triggered lots and lots of comments today and since last night, and lots of thanks. So there's a real perception out there, based on the comments and my own, that there's a lack of parking enforcement, at least in those handicap areas. And I think it's a whole area in the city where parking is an issue. And a parking enforcement officer is not a commissioned officer, is my understanding, doesn't carry a firearm and had all that liability and all that extra salary that the responsibility carries with it. But I think it would make a big difference on perception of people on how the city is enforcing parking regulations. The other one is volunteer coordinator. I think it's past time, and I should have been making this pitch more formally for months now. But the idea of having a city-sponsored volunteer coordinator to help get volunteers for city operations, as well as the many nonprofit groups we have here. We do have lots and lots of volunteers. And if people start asking and looking around, they can find opportunities. But it'd be nice to have more of a central database of those opportunities. And I think we would get a lot of good labor. We got a lot of high-quality people in the city. And I think a lot of them would be glad to... be glad to volunteer more. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Anyone else in the audience desiring to speak?
My name is Jody Hutchinson. I live at 330 Rainier Boulevard North in Old Town. As to the budget and specifically parks and recreation, I noticed the skate park has opened, and it looks wonderful, and everybody seems to be enjoying it. But it does seem as if the vast majority of the people who are enjoying it are in fact of one gender. And I am wondering what, if anything, the city of Issaquah is planning that might provide an equivalent facility for members of the opposite gender. Thank you.
Thank you, Jody. It's a good thing we don't answer questions during audience comments, because I don't have fun for that. Lindsay?
Yep. My name's Lindsay Walsh, 1769 28th Avenue Northeast in the Highlands. Regarding the budget, I noticed that there was the council manic debt that you guys were considering or that staff had proposed. I don't have a problem with that 1.656 million, whatever it was, sorry, 279 pages, hard to remember all the numbers. But I believe that was three different projects, 1 million for Northwest Sammamish Road, 156 for Front Street, and then a 500,000, and I tried to find what it was. But I believe the 500,000 is the proposed number from the CIP previously, and now it's being budgeted forward at 750. And so I wonder whether that 1656 should be upgraded by 250? I don't know. I'd have to find the numbers on that, but just something to check. Also, with the council manic bonds, I think particularly focusing on transportation projects, considering that is obviously our traffic issue, is a really good idea. And what Bob had mentioned in one of your meetings, how you could borrow from utility funds or one of those and effectively be able to pay ourselves the interest, I think really makes it a good opportunity for us to move some of those projects forward that are sitting on the CIP, and particularly if we can publicize those and let the residents know that we're doing that. Regarding that, I'm really pleased to see that the neighborhood engagement coordinator was given a little bit more staff potential so that we can really move that project forward. So, thanks.
Thank you, Lindsay. Anyone else desiring to speak this evening? Anyone else? Seeing no one then, audience comments are closed at 7:39.
34.
Thank you, Tola. And so, Stacy?
I see that the motion would be to continue the public hearing. And I can make that motion and assume it'll be seconded, and then I don't know if there's discussion about the motion or anything else, but I guess we'll find out. I would move to continue the public hearing to the December 4, 2017 council meeting to allow for additional public testimony.
Moved and seconded discussions or questions?
Question, Mr. Mayor. So when the public asks questions here as well during this public hearing, are we going to respond, or does the mayor's office respond, or how does Lindsay and others get their answers?
Administration will respond.
Thank you.
Any additional questions or discussion? Seeing none then, all those in favor of continuing the public hearing to the December 4, 2017 council meeting to allow for additional public testimony signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that carries unanimously. Moving now to our regular business items. The first is agenda bill 7392, 2018 proposed levy and revenue sources. And Jennifer, you're on for this one also.
Thank you, Mayor Butler. Pursuant to RCW 84.55.120, all taxing jurisdictions that collect a property tax levy must hold a public hearing. This was done at the November 6, 2017 city council meeting. I'm going to talk real briefly about the, only the revenue sources, and this is a portion of the budget process. But all city funds included in the proposed revenue budget are a little over 129 million dollars. The largest portion is, of course, charges for service as well as taxes. The proposed 2018 general fund revenue sources equal an estimated increase of 8.7 percent from 2017. Those new sources include rebate program dollars, E911 escrow dollars, recreation program enhancements. The 2018 general fund budget does include, I'm sorry, my time is up.
We will reset the clock.
Thank you. That's a hint. Expanded sources include that property tax increase of 1 percent. That is the limitation that is offered from the state of Washington.
Just keep going.
And we're done.
We're trying to figure it out.
Okay. We also have proposed expanded revenues in the general fund for the permit and development charges and as well as cost allocation plan update that are forecasted to bring in additional revenues. Total sources in the general fund include a little over 50 million dollars, with the largest portion being property taxes, sales taxes, utility taxes, and BNO taxes. The property tax portion of the general fund budget is proposed at 1 percent. This equates to 86,698 dollars. This information is provided by the King County Assessors Office, which provides our estimated or assessed valuation for all properties in the city of Issaquah and the overall estimated levy amount. The 2018 estimated valuation is over 10 billion dollars. The 2018 proposed regular levy is 8,993,478 dollars. That includes that 1 percent increase as well as new construction valuation and any refunds or assessments, and these are automatic. So what we're talking about is the limitation on the 1 percent property tax levy tonight. The excess levy is proposed to be set at 1,750,000 dollars. This is to cover the 2018 principal and interest payments that were approved by the voters. The 2018 proposed property tax rate is approximately 89 cents per thousand of valuation. Again, this is based, the final number will come from King County after all is said and done with final valuations and final levies adopted by taxing jurisdictions. The 2018 proposed excess tax rate is estimated at 17 cents per 1,000 dollars of assessed valuation. There are a number of different taxing jurisdictions.
Can I ask a question? Can you go back one slide, please, Jen? So the 1 percent property tax rate increase for 2018 equates to 86,698. So that's an increase in the collection, the city can collect no more than 1 percent than it did last year.
That is correct.
So I also noticed in the motion, it says at a rate of 1 percent over the previous year. And so I just wanted to make it clear to people who are here and watching. The confusing part, when it says 1 percent property tax rate increase, appears as though the proposal is to raise the property tax rates by 1 percent, and that's not the proposal.
That is not the case. The city council can increase the levy, the regular levy portion, only by 1 percent, and that's the 86,000. However, the levy also increases automatically by the value of the new construction and then the value of what's called assessments or refunds that also the city can levy for each year. And so those are numbers that until we get into the fall of each year, do we know what we have for our new construction valuation or any of those other additional levy amounts? So the actual equivalent increase in property taxes is more than 1 percent, but the city council can only authorize 1 percent to go up. And that's why it is confusing. It's property tax for the state of Washington, so that's at 86,000.
Thanks.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Just wanted to briefly go over that there are other jurisdictions who tax property owners, and the city of Issaquah is just one of many. Those include the Regional Transit Authority, King County Flood Zone, Port of Seattle Ferry District, Emergency Medical Services, the Library District, the County State School Fund, and the Issaquah School District. So for 2017, this is an example of last year's. The total rate is 9.9, $9.90 essentially per 1,000 of assessed valuation. You can see the total for the city of Issaquah was $1.12 for that 1,000 per assessed valuation. If we look at the actual tax bill, that equates to some, the actual dollars that are paid to those taxing jurisdictions. Again, this is based on 2017 other jurisdiction rates because the city of Issaquah does not know what those other jurisdictions are proposing or adopting in their levies. So for a medium value home of about 700,000 for the city of Issaquah, you see the tax bill of about 786 dollars. The 2018 levy rate is scheduled to go down to about 89 cents per thousand of assessed valuation from about 94 cents, and this is the regular levy. What is also different from the regular levy is the excess levy for 2018. That dollar figure is 17 cents per 1,000 dollars of assessed valuation. This is a graphic of the actual rates as we look at 2017 actual versus the estimate for 2018. Property tax assessed valuations then are increasing, and over the last three years have gone up. In 2016, 9 percent in assessed valuation, 17 went up over 11 percent, and it's estimated that property tax assessed valuations will go up on an average of 12.3 percent. So for 2018, if we were to use that same median value home of 700,000, but we added in or adjusted the portion for the city of Issaquah, you can see that the portion for city-paid taxes would go down about 3 dollars to about 783 dollars. And that'll conclude my presentation with regards to the 2018 proposed property tax levy of a 1 percent increase. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Did a very thorough job at a very interesting presentation. So Jen, thank you. Stacy?
Thanks. I would approve resolution number 2017 dash...
16.
Confirming an increase of the property tax levy for the city, regular property tax for 2018 at a rate of 1 percent over the previous year, and to adopt ordinance number 2812. Leveing the general taxes for the city of Issaquah for the fiscal year commencing January 1, 2018, on all property, both real and personal, in said city which is subject to taxation for the purpose of paying sufficient revenue to carry on the services of said city for the ensuing year as required by law.
Second. Moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions? Seeing none then, all those voting to approve resolution number 2017-16 and ordinance number 2812 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that carries unanimously. Thank you, Jen. Moving now to agenda bill 7491, the 2018 legislative agenda. City Administrator Bob Harrison for the staff presentation.
Good evening. So the city council reviewed the legislative agenda at their last meeting, which was the committee of the whole, and went through there. And so what I'm going to go through this evening is just those items that based on the feedback we received, we took stab at trying to incorporate. And so this work was done by Doug Levy and I, and then the mayor-elect provided some feedback as well because the comments were related to one of those, and so we wanted to make sure we got it captured accurately. And so the first thing was, we added a preamble to this, which kind of identifies this issue regarding regional traffic. And so quickly, it just says, "Note to area legislators, while Issaquah recognizes the 2018 session is a short 60-day session, and that meaningful progress in revenue and infrastructure measures may be more difficult, the city urges lawmakers to think about revenue tools and options that can be used to address regional transportation corridor gridlock, growth management act-related infrastructure costs, and more. Issaquah respectfully asks that lawmakers identify and fund those regional projects required to move goods, services, and workers from urban area to urban area, if not in 2018, then in the 2019 session. In particular, those urban areas in southeast King County connected by low-capacity state and county routes such as Highway 169 and Highway 118, where the GMA has required growth to be accommodated in local zoning, but no impact fees have been collected and no funding has been identified to provide regional infrastructure to connect workers to jobs." And so the goal of including this as a preamble is we know that this is a very short session this upcoming year, and so to get an outcome on this would be extremely difficult this year, but we did want to communicate the concerns that Issaquah's had on regional traffic and the impact that has had upon us. The second item, which is a little more challenging to read, but essentially cutting through all the cut-through that we did, we dropped greatly, and then we dropped tremendous, and this was regarding the I-90 auxiliary lanes, SR18 I-90 interchange and critical gaps and regional roadway network funding. Then we added, "The city hopes that additional revenue tools can be provided in future years and anticipates bringing forth other needs in connection with the 2019-2021 transportation budget. In the meantime, however, the city wants to ensure that area lawmakers protect investments made under the 2015 connecting Washington and fine-tuned in 2017. One pending investment involves eastbound and westbound auxiliary lanes for I-90." So we're essentially trying to communicate that those projects that were originally in connecting Washington, and then there were modifications made, particularly as it related to the SR18 interchange where that project got moved up, that they maintain those as currently authorized. And then there will likely be a change to the project that was funded that initially was going to be peak-use lanes. And so based on meetings that we've had with WashDOT, they are proposing auxiliary lanes which would be available on a 24/7 basis, and would actually have an enhanced impact on traffic on I-90 versus the high-peak-use lanes. And then the last item can be found in the issue regarding the Land Use Growth Management Act housing. And we added a bullet here that says, "Issaquah is facing mounting pressure due to growth management and lack of regional transportation investments to support that demand. It's called support initiatives that proactively address regional transportation solutions." And so that was in relation to some of the concerns regarding the lack of investment by the state, and although our municipality continues to meet the requirements under the GMA and the requirements put upon us by our growth targets. So with that, those are the proposed amendments based on the committee of the whole conversation that we had last week, and if this is acceptable, then that would be great, and then we'll prepare that for our legislative breakfast that we'll be scheduling in January. I'm available for any questions.
Are there questions of Bob? Paul?
Thank you, Bob, and thanks for the update. Couple questions. I'm going to start with the preamble. The characterization of... The characterization of Okay, about, let me see, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7th line down, "County connected by low-capacity state and county routes such as Highway 169 and Highway 18." I found the characterization of, say, Highway 169, or actually, both of those, as, characterizing those as low-capacity, just kind of jumped out at me. Certainly have insufficient capacity. And I just wonder if we want this to be sticky in people's mind, I think we should maybe describe them in a way that actually makes the point, is that their capacity is insufficient. That was one comment. And then, I have a kind of a general question, too, about why we would put Highway 169 on there as opposed to something like, say, I don't know, State Route 900, which actually runs through town. I think the connection with 18 is obvious. We know that because of its insufficient capacity and unreliability, it drives a lot of the pass-through that we get, but 169 isn't nearly as obvious, but 900 is? So, those are the, I just wanted to, so, my proposal would be to somehow change that from low-capacity to somehow mention that these certain highways, such as State Route 18 and potentially State Route 900 instead of 169, and as having insufficient capacity.
So, Bob? Mary Lou has a question.
Oh, yes. Well, I was
You didn't know that, but I
Well, there was a
Do you want to address Paul's comments first?
So, the term insufficiency is actually probably a little bit better term than low, so that would, in my opinion, would be a good change. Those, from what we have seen, based on the Isquah-Hobart Road study, we don't know for sure, but we do know that there's a significant amount of traffic that's coming from south King County into the community, which, if there were improvements made to 18, we could probably see less impact of some of those commuters on that, and so, I think that's why 18 was referenced. The same was true from 169. Now, that's more anecdotal because we haven't done a study there, but based on communications received from Covington and Maple Valley, they said there's, even though Hobart Road can take sometimes an hour in the morning, it's still faster than taking 169 to wherever it is that they're commuting. And so, based on their reports to us that making improvements to enhance the capacity of 169 would actually have a enhanced impact on the amount of traffic traveling through Isquah-Hobart Road during the AM peak, so that's why those two were called out. I think, and I was just trying to take a quick look for it, but we did talk about improvements made to 900 elsewhere in the legislative agenda. I know that they were looking at a sketch plan to be done, and that's been completed for this upcoming year at May Valley Road and SR-900. So, I felt like it got addressed somewhere else, but if you want to call it out or reemphasize it again, you could certainly do that.
Let me just say, my thinking is, if somebody reads this preamble, someone in the legislature reads this preamble, anything's going to stack. I wouldn't want to do anything that makes them go, "What?", because 169 just isn't obvious, and 900 is. It runs through town. And so, I'm just thinking about that, the impact of this preamble. I really, yes, yes, 900 is mentioned later. I definitely saw that. Those are my thinkings. Other than that, I like the idea of something I was hoping to see. So, I like the fact that there's a preamble, that, I like that emphasis. It's right up front. You know what we're reaching out for, and this is what we discussed with Doug, so I'm glad to see that.
Mary Lou?
Sure. Bob, just a question, wondering, I think it reads really well as well. I like it. I think, I wonder if, because of Paul's comments, it needs a little bit more information, such as, I like the word insufficient capacity much, much better, but after Highway 169 and Highway 18 specifically saying to relieve pressure off of Isquah-Hobart Road and adding State Route 900, because that also makes a lot of sense, but it's sort of a, trying to solve a different problem or a piece of a different problem. So, I actually like both those changes. I don't think they're huge changes. I think they make sense.
Other questions or discussion? Paul?
Yeah, I have another one. Down in the autumn of the, well, I don't know what page it is, environmental natural resources, the part you added on land use growth management, housing. So, scroll down with the one on the screen. Keep going. Yeah, it's the paragraph you added at the end there. It says, "Issaquah is facing mounting pressure due to growth management." And I think, so that phrase itself, "due to growth management," is somewhat ambiguous. I wasn't sure what exactly we were trying to say or imply, and then when you presented it to us, Bob, you actually said something, was, "Okay, that wasn't what I was thinking. I didn't know if that was the intent." So, I think maybe some clarification around that. And I think your comment earlier was about growth management, and it's what it's, and we're talking about the overarching Growth Management Act and different policies, and what the county has done with housing allocations, and all this stuff that we've done. I think you made reference to what the statutes have kind of forced Issaquah to do, and I thought, based upon the rest of the sentence, it was really more about kind of growth in the subregion around us, was what the purpose of this sentence was. So, your comment confused me a little bit more, and so, there's that comment. And are we really talking about growth management for this statement, or is it really about just overall growth and specifically doing, or do we saying, "Issaquah is facing mounting pressure due to growing regional population," and I would even add, "rising housing costs, and a lack of regional transportation investments, dah, dah, dah." So, instead of growth management, I just, when I read it and I read what I thought was the intent of it, I would suggest that we change "pressure due to growth management." But again, you guys wrote it, so tell me more of your thinking. Instead of "pressure due to growth management," "pressure due to growing regional population and rising housing costs." That's my thought.
So, certainly, we could get a little more specific on that, which addresses some of the items that you just talked about. The comment that was made at the meeting was in regards to the fact that we're just essentially 1,000 units short, shy of our 2030 growth targets, and it's 2017, and that, you know, the, some of the challenges being affiliated with growth management and the Growth Management Act, in combination with the lack of investment by the state into the regional transportation network, are causing some pretty significant issues on land use. So, your comments, I think, could enhance that because all of those things, I mean, the symptoms are all across the board, it's rising housing costs, more traffic, you know, but they're all related to the same kind of challenge, which is growth. So, if you'd like us to be a little more specific on that, we could do that, but that was, based on what we heard at the meeting, that was kind of the
Okay. So, one other thing that jumped out at me, so, just the use of the phrase "growth management" is, I don't, this is going to Olympia, and a lot of legislators, hopefully, or at least lobbyists, will read it and others. And it can be read as, you know, kind of pressure due to growth management, like, "Oh, my gosh, okay, Issaquah is, might be ending up on the side of the ledger that, you know, that we need to completely do away with growth management." Because there is that voice, there is that caucus in Olympia. It just wants to do away with GMA totally. And I don't think that's where we are, and I don't think that's the intent of this. It's to correct it and fine-tune it, but not do away with it. And so, it's just the way it says, "due to growth management." I don't think that was our intent, to maybe add fuel to those that would want to just do away with the Growth Management Act as opposed to maybe making improvements. So, that was another reason I, those are the thoughts that occurred to me when I read that.
I'm wondering if there's two thoughts in here, because I, actually, my recollection from the meeting, and I didn't go back and watch the tape, is that this was an Issaquah-specific comment and not a comment, yes or no, for growth management. If you think that needs to go in there, more of a preamble to this point, that Issaquah supports growth management regionally and supports the current Growth Management Act, that would be fine, but my recollection from the meeting was that this was Issaquah has zoned itself for growth, yet will have received the majority of its, Issaquah's residential growth in 2018 or 19 without the accompanying transit and transportation improvements that may not get here till 2031 or 2042, depending on which improvement it is you're looking for, and that that causes an enormous burden on a community. I think it has to do with the fact that we still have zoning capacity and can continue to add housing units without any matching transportation projects at the regional level. So, I think a preamble might be a good idea so that at least the comment is taken in context, but my recollection from the meeting was that it was very focused on within our city.
So, I appreciate that, and the, I guess, the later part that says, "A lack of regional transportation investments," so that's not very specific, and I really wasn't sure what the scope of that was. To me, I thought, when I read this, that it was kind of a partner statement to the preamble. It was that scope of region, not just about our own, more close-in. So, that was my assumption when I read that, and that's why I was saying that. So, if that's not the intent, you just kind of spun it like it was more just us, and so, that's not the way that came across to me, so maybe that clarification would be good.
Tola?
So, for the purposes of advancing where we're at this evening, I agree with Paul that I think somebody could read that as anti-GMA, so I'd like to propose that we amend the language and replace the phrase "growth management" with the phrase "unprecedented regional housing demand." And then, the statement, "Further blah, blah, blah investments to support that demand," makes sense.
Can you read the whole sentence?
So, it would then be, "Issaquah is facing mounting pressure due to unprecedented regional housing demand, and a lack of regional transportation investments to support that demand." I think that more closely reflects, and would avoid any possible misunderstanding about how we feel about the GMA.
Seeing some heads nod before we get
Thank you, Doug.
To a motion. Going back to Paul's originally, original discussion and suggestions with the preamble, I think he made a couple. One, "Connected by low-capacity," change that to insufficient.
I think you need to change the structure of the sentence a little bit to get insufficient, to say, "These highways have insufficient capacity," but
And do you have a suggested wording for that before we get to a motion?
Okay, so you went back there. So, were we done with Tola's suggestion?
I think, I, my general, I think we are.
Okay. So, Bob, did you have an alternative using my suggestions? I'm sorry, I didn't have one typed out like Tola just did, but I knew you were working on something.
So, I was just making notes, and the hard part is, we're kind of having like, the council's acting as a work session at a council meeting, and so
Well, this is the first time we've seen this language.
That's correct. No, no, I totally agree. So, what I was thinking of doing was, if the council, I think we've got the gist of what the council's saying on this, and it just needs a little bit of wordsmithing. So, if this was, we could either come up with specific language tonight, or if the council was, okay, you know, go back and draft some language that accomplishes what we further discussed this evening, you could adopt that, and we could just, you know, administratively make those adjustments to accomplish what you're saying. So, that's the note I had made on here, to deal with the insufficient capacity, the whole sentence may need some slight modification, but I think that way you'd be able to adopt it this evening, and then we'd be able to better convey, I think, what you were trying to say.
Phil?
I think we could do that this evening. I like Tola's rewording on that one, and I'd like to suggest this rewording on the preamble. So, just that little switch here to make it sound a little better. "In particular, those urban areas in southeast King County connected by state and county routes with insufficient capacity, such as Highway 18, 900, and 169." It's that flop of, so it just reads grammatically.
So, it makes sense.
Surrounded by really good editors.
So
Make a motion.
Stacy?
Sure. I would move to approve the 2018 Legislative Agenda as revised and including the suggested edits from tonight.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any additional discussion? Seeing none then, all those in favor of approving the 2018 Legislative Agenda as revised and including the language discussed this evening, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed? Well, we made some sausage.
Right. Pretty easy.
Well, that was nothing.
Yeah.
Moving now to Agenda Bill 7512, Council Vacancy Process. Tina Eggers, City Clerk, for the staff presentation.
Hi, thank you. I'm just going to pull up the council questions for the interview that were proposed in the Agenda Bill, and then the submitted questions that were received just prior to the council meeting from Polly. So, just give me a moment. Mr. Mayor, I'm not sure all the council members are aware that there was something sent by email, because I sent it so late. Is it okay if I let them know that I did send an email just before the meeting?
That would be great, because I wasn't aware either.
Yeah, I know. So, I, very late this evening, just before the meeting, sent an email that is in your inbox that Tina's referring to, that suggests five or six either replacement questions, different questions, not that you don't have more that you might have, anyway, for a discussion. I just wanted to let you know it was in your email, sorry that it was late.
So, the questions on the left are numbered 1 through 6. Those are questions that we have used in past practice, and again, the questions on the right, I went ahead and numbered them slightly differently so that we wouldn't be confused by which numbers that we were speaking to. Did you want to speak to specific questions?
I'm okay. Just quickly, I felt like, having been through the process a couple times myself, as well as some of the other council members, that maybe our questions might be a little bit dated. I'm pretty sure we all know what the problems and opportunities and issues are now, and after just having had an election and a lot of door-knocking, that's even more fine-tuned. And so, I was trying to look to see if I was a resident and these people applying for the vacancy were knocking at my door, what would I want to hear from them? And so, if you just ran for office, you got interviewed by 22,000 people, and now, if you're running to fill a vacancy, you're going to get interviewed by, or some sort of interview, by council, which is only six of us. So, imagine if it's coming from the person whose door is being knocked on. What would they want to ask these people? So, that was sort of the lens I put it through.
Okay.
Well, I went through this drill, and, you know, I think the first one is actually really good. Just, I mean, that was so on everybody's mind as we move forward, what do we do to not lose the essential Issaquah character? That is such a poor question that was asked, and so, I would, I think that would be great to give candidates the opportunity to address that one. Second one almost sounds like, I think I know what you're getting at, but it's almost like a quiz. Tell me what the role the city has. Tell me what the role the city has. That one is, I don't know, like another variation on that.
I'm figuring that out now.
Tola?
I'm not crazy about question B, because I think the schools do the best they can to keep up with the demand, and I'm not sure that you would get consistency from the seven of us as to how we feel about we should, whether and to what extent we have a role in helping the schools keep up with challenges in front of them. The other question I would have is E and A. Mary Lou, can you explain to me the difference between E and A, because they seem like they have similarities?
E and A. Okay, A.
They both seem to be growth and Issaquah's essential character.
Not that.
Yes, I guess E is...
So residents' quality of, and maybe actually they are the same question slightly. So one is, what is Issaquah's essential character? Each candidate would then be able to, or applicant, I guess, would be able to talk about the unique Issaquah characteristics, not their residents' experience. What we are hearing about through the moratorium is then the quality of life experience residents having, you know, continuous construction in their neighborhoods, or difficulty accessing, or longer commutes, or all the rest of it. So they, one is the, what makes Issaquah the community unique, and each applicant may have a different take on that. The other one is more the day-to-day of people are saying it's harder to live here, and as we keep growing and building, it's difficult. So reduced quality of life. So they could be put together, or we could just pick one of them, and, you know, they're just slightly different. I mean, honestly, you almost have to say, "Tola, what is Issaquah's essential character?"
Yeah, I mean...
What answer came to your head when you were asked that? How do you describe Issaquah's character to other cities and council members when you're talking to them? What are we?
Yeah, I almost wonder if you have one question that's how do you handle growth, and the other is, what is Issaquah's, what makes Issaquah unique, or what are the essential things that are important about Issaquah? What do we maintain? What are the things that we need to maintain as a city?
And actually, I'm totally not a person who is in any way married to what they write. Everybody else can always say it better than I can, so you could do, it's not take this question or that, you could change it, you could make it any way you want.
Yeah, I would reconstitute those two questions and separate them out into handling growth and what makes the city unique.
Bill?
Yeah, I'm kind of in there, A and E to me, you get in the same way, so I only want one of those or a combination, one combined on those. B, I really don't like mixing that school issue in right now, is, just doesn't fit in at all. The one on the other side that I think is missing, I'd like to keep in there, I'm okay with, you know, basically either way. If we go this way, if we got rid of B and combined A and E, I would like to bring over number one, because I think that's essential. Why do you want to serve on Issaquah City Council? I think that's a good one. So that's my recommendation, keep one, combine A and E somehow, and get rid of B, and keep those ones on the right side.
Make a clarification. Mine were not substitute questions, they were supplemental. This is not a new list. This is not a new list. This was giving you 12 or 13 questions to pick from.
That's, that's, that's a lot. I did not understand that. I was, I was looking at a new set of questions versus an old set of questions.
Supplemental.
Wow, okay.
Suggestion.
Because they, excuse me, but you're looking at it that way, I mean, there's, there's a lot of crossover when you're looking at those, so you have to, you know, kind of rewrite the whole thing, because as a person also having gone through this, when you have questions that are similar and asking you to answer them in a 10-minute presentation, you add confusion to it. I would rather have five direct questions than a dozen.
Maybe we should just pick five.
And that's what I just kind of did, is when I said combine A and E or one of the other, get rid of B and add one, that gives you like five or six, I think, if I'm counting right. I think that's a much better way than having too many, it makes it too confusing for the applicant.
Are there any questions that there's consensus to delete or remove? Should I put a strike through, through B, or is there still discussion?
Speaker?
Okay.
Can I make a suggestion on the old list? And I guess if you also went through this process, you may agree or disagree, but I really thought everybody answered question four in the same way, every time, every person. Didn't really, didn't really help differentiate, couldn't really, didn't really help me much to understand that. The Issaquah's biggest opportunities or issues, I think we're there, I think we know it, I would strike that too. So I would take three and four off the list if others agree.
So I agree with you about four. Everybody says, "I would listen." Well, great, all right. I actually like three, but I might say, other than traffic, what do you consider to be Issaquah's biggest opportunities or issues? Because as you know, I continue to believe that workforce, housing, living wage, jobs is actually pretty much up there with traffic. So I actually like to see if there's other issues that other people consider, you know, super important. But yeah, if you just ask it that way, anybody who wants to get a council's going to say traffic.
Yeah.
Stacy?
Well, I was just gonna, if you wanted to combine A and E, you can just say, "Issaquah has growing pains, what can be done to better manage these times of rapid growth in a way that protects existing residents' quality of life and preserves Issaquah's essential character?"
So good.
Good editors tonight.
Yes. Very well done. Issaquah has growing pains. Take five minutes, not 10 minutes.
I can send, I can send you the rest.
Okay. And that was combining A and E?
Yes.
Scratch A and E then, run out to...
I can, I'll provide it to Tina.
And Stacy has the wording, she can provide, Tina.
It's approved.
Okay.
So C, how many hours can you commit to City Council? So I guess that suggests that you get to choose how many hours? I don't have that choice, it seems. So I don't know. I guess it would reveal whether there's a significant troubling gap in the perception of what it takes. But it's a, it's a one-word-answer question. So I'm not, I think a better question would be, can you describe your understanding of the time commitment it takes to be on City Council? Be a little bit more of an explanation rather than it takes, I don't know, two hours, eight hours?
It could be, we can simply ask them if they're willing to give up their evenings and weekends. Because it's essentially what it becomes.
I like that better.
But if they're willing to give up their nights and weekends?
No.
Your understanding of the time. Be willing to give up your life to be...
Actually, number six under, sort of gets to, and so my suggestion would be that you, we've, see into that, because you'll get more information from question number six, and probably an indication of commitment out of that.
And I really agree with you, Fred. I think that a lot of people don't realize that, and for someone maybe coming for a single-issue kind of thing, you realize that it is more than just the city of Issaquah we're working with and constantly. I think that's where a lot of people miss out. So I do like question six to show that there's much more commitment than just being up here for City Council meetings, as people listen to our regional reports with, you know, quite a bit of attention, can tell.
I almost preferred D over, what's the one that says, if you feel, oh, four.
Number four.
Replace four with D. I like it because it's, D is community-centric, and four is about, what if you don't all feel the same, which is, happens often. About what criteria will you use to decide how to vote on issues that divide the community? On issues that occasionally divide the community?
What was the first part of that?
What criteria, what criteria would you use? Would you use to make decision on issues that divide the community? Suggestion. That was a suggestion.
Yeah, I put it in brackets as a question mark.
So are we looking to keep this at six questions total, or we should probably decide what we're going to, we're going to keep them at six? Or are we going to add to the list and ask applicants to answer all of the questions in 10 minutes, or ask them to choose a certain number of questions? Or if you ask them to do that, then you're not necessarily get to compare answers?
Why can't we ask them to answer these questions in writing and then to present to us what they consider most important out of their answers?
So good.
Then we get to see what they consider most important out of all this.
I really like that.
Because they can't possibly do all of this.
And I agree with Bill that when you get over five questions, they just don't have enough time to do a good job. Wow.
So we've received a lot of good comments this evening on questions. The motion is to approve the process and timeline for filling the vacancy. There's administrative work that needs to be done, and we have time to try to refine the questions and provide those of, I don't think we have to decide on the questions this evening.
Is there a motion on the floor?
Not yet.
I'll move then to approve the process and timeline for filling the 2018 vacancy for position number three as presented or as amended.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Official questions or discussion? Bill?
Well, as presented, it says recruitment period starts November 22nd, which is Wednesday. So that means we do have to have some sort of questions together if we're going to make that announcement. And so I'm okay with, you know, somehow tweaking these a little more the way we've been doing that. But the one big difference that someone suggested and a lot of head nods is, that is different from the process, is have a response in writing to everything, and then the 10-minute presentation will talk about whatever, whatever all those comments they think are, those responses are most important. That's a different process than what's been laid out here at all, or what we've done historically. So, you know, that's just it. So how, you know, two questions, how do we get that modification in here where I think everybody wants? And I think we need to have a little additional time for someone to do the word submitting on these questions as we've been talking about tonight.
Paul, do you want to amend the motion? Or...
I'm not sure how to. Just let me look at this.
So Tina, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I was just going to say, Tina, is the appropriate thing to do, either Paul amend it, amend his own motion, or somebody else make a motion to amend the process to include, require written answers?
I put down that that, I heard that as being a modification, you can vote on it, or that you can just say there's no objections.
So in the, yeah, so in the packet, there is exhibit B, proposed question, so this is where we go, and it actually says in there, preparing for your interview, and so Tina just put some stuff up here. So if we want to do what's suggested, I know there has to be some finalization of the questions, but then this additional modification, then that would be an amendment, that would be a modification to exhibit B.
So then, Fred?
Stacy?
Well, I think we should decide what the questions are going to be before we vote, so that we all know what they're going to be.
Okay.
So maybe should we do thumbs up, thumbs down on the questions as?
Sure.
So the first one, two, three, do we want to include those three?
One, does it have to say, and who will you represent? Because that always gets the same answer as well. Represent the people that... I like question one.
Do you like number one as modified?
I'm going to hold off on one, because sometimes that may be critical. I mean, because sometimes there's people that represent some things that aren't the norm, so I think it could be a piece. It could be nothing, but I don't, I'd rather leave it in than take it out.
Tola?
So I'm going to, I respectfully disagree, Bill. I've done this a whole bunch of times, and nobody ever says like, "I'm just going to represent Thales," right? I mean, you know, maybe they say, "I'm going to represent the folks who haven't been well-represented." But I mean, it's not, nobody, you know, nobody's going to say anything that's going to allow us to help differentiate, I think.
But I remember hearing some answers that were pretty specific from some folks. I've been through it too on both ends, so I don't think it hurts. If it doesn't give us anything, that's okay, but I think there's some possibility there that something might come up.
Well, I suppose since it's in writing, they can choose how much of their written response they want to emphasize or not emphasize.
Good question for Tina. Tola just brought up a point. It's written, so how do you prevent getting a manifesto versus just answers to questions?
I would say, please limit answers to any question to 150 words.
Oh, awesome, okay. Because you just made me think we might be reading manifestos.
I would say each question would be 150 words. Isn't 150 words what council candidates get in the county, the county materials?
250, I think. 150.
Okay, so we have number one. What's proposed is to strike. Who will you represent? If you support striking that, then thumbs up. One, two, three, go. Bill?
Okay.
You said if you vote for thumbs up, you didn't say thumbs down option, okay.
Same as the budget, so it's so you know which way to go.
All right.
Okay? So we're going to strike that. How about number two? Ready?
Sure.
Those up or thumbs down?
Okay.
That's a keeper.
I'm thinking.
That one.
You were thinking about it, yeah.
What do you consider to be Issaquah's biggest opportunities or issues, and what would you do to address them?
Could I throw a modification possibly on that? It was, we're talking about these things, other than, just, that's a question, but after the comma, just, "other than traffic and development." So because we don't want a whole bunch on that, we're getting that on other issues. So I'm trying to get to those other issues of affordable housing or those... So I'm trying to get to those other issues of affordable housing or those other issues.
Respectfully disagree. People want to know what's...
What was your other proposed word?
Development. Because we're addressing traffic and development, I think, and various other places.
Okay, so...
Is there a desire to?
Thumbs up. A thumbs up means that you support adding the language.
One.
Okay, so we're not...
Two, three, four.
We're not adding new language. Okay, number... Number four proposes striking, number four.
So three, you're good with keeping?
We did actually vote on the question.
Yeah, do you want a thumbs up if you keep number three as is? All right. Okay, number four proposes striking this question altogether. A thumbs up means you would strike it. Okay. Number five, do you propose, keep question five, thumbs up is to keep question five? Number six, in addition to council committee assignments, council members each serve on one or more regional board, boards, one or more regional board or commission. What are your views on serving regionally? In what areas would you like to serve Issaquah regionally? What qualifies you for that service? And then the bracketed?
There was a note that said time commitment. There was a question if describing your time would fall under this or, but it, that question wasn't resolved.
Okay. I think, well, I talked about the time commitment. I didn't think it would go there.
I'm actually wondering now that we have Tola's suggestion of, we're gonna get all these written, then they get to pick what's most important. If we couldn't just have both of those questions and not combine them?
Yes.
And they will decide what to talk to.
Sure.
Because they're different questions.
So thumbs up if you, if you want to keep number six. All right. Okay, the last, so then the propose, one proposal is to add the question, Issaquah has growing pains. What can be done to better manage these times of rapid growth in a way that protects existing residents' quality of life and preserves Issaquah's essential character?
So you're proposing that replace A and E, correct?
Yeah, that's what I had proposed, combining A and E.
Yes.
Question seven.
Thumbs up means you're, a new question? Okay. Number C up there would propose adding a question or, yeah, describe your understanding of the time commitment related to serving on city council.
Fulfilling your obligations as a council.
Yeah. In order, related to...
Nobody's looking yet.
Fulfilling your obligations. I don't know, what do you want to say?
Yeah, you know, understanding of the time commitment required to fulfill your obligations as a council member.
Required, yeah, after commitment, required to...
Fulfill your obligations as a council member.
That's good.
Yeah, I like that.
Fulfill.
Fulfill, no, sorry.
The other, fulfill.
As a council member. Okay, if you support adding that question, thumbs up. Number D is a proposal that says, what criteria would you use to make decisions on issues that divide the community? Still reading.
Which question are you on? Are you on the first part of D or the latter part of D?
That part, the replace language. Ready to? Vote on it?
Isn't that almost, I mean, there's gonna be a lot of decisions to be made. And there's gonna be different criteria for all of it. So...
Just a snapshot.
Criteria is very specific to me. I'm having a problem with that word. I understand the point, it's just the word criteria.
Maybe I'll take a stab at explaining what the intent was. Kind of look into your thought process, you know? And so, yes, a person could answer it generally, uses criteria or their lens or filter for every decision, or they may pick out one or two and specifically describe, in this situation, this is my lens I use and that. So trying to see what criteria they use. The way it's written now, I think it gives them the leeway to have a broader lens or to be given something specific.
How about we trade criteria for process?
Process is different to me. Criteria is, you're really, it's kind of a value that you have, that you use, that you bring to the table when you're evaluating something. And a process to me is you do this first, and then you do this, and then you do that.
Yeah, I was just thinking simply the word how.
How would you make decisions?
Because if they start talking about values, then that's what you are looking for.
Values, right. There you go.
How would you?
You make decisions.
On issues that divide...
Strike what criteria? Replace with how.
Delete use.
We're actually not bad at that.
No.
Doing very good to it.
How would you make decisions on issues that divide the community? And it says be specific. So if, thumbs up if you would like to add this question.
We need be specific. I mean, we're asking every, questions here and everything, so 150 words.
Yeah.
Why do we need it on that?
I'm kind of nervous that somebody might do a motherhood, everything for the best interest of the community and, you know, so be specific to me. It can be general, but if others are specific in their answers and we put them side by side, one, you know what you're getting, the other is just a motherhood statement, so I don't mind having to be specific.
Do you want to add be specific to the, to the intro?
Actually, Tina, that's a great question. This to me, as a council member sitting up here and listening to, on behalf of the rest of the community, this to me was one where I, being specific was the most important. So I'm worried if we put it up at top, we might end up with a motherhood answer for this one. So this is my thought.
I'm okay with it, it just seems odd, I want to be specific on every question, but I'm okay with leaving it. I'm fine.
You guys ready to vote on that one? Thumbs up if you want the new... You have the question? Oh, there's more?
Oh my gosh.
There was two more. They got pushed down. They got pushed down. There's a Tola question there.
There are a lot of applicants, I think all of the answers on all of the hard work that's ahead of us will know what to do. Issaquah is becoming increasingly affordable. What can be done to change this trend?
It's that wire. I like it.
You know, Tola, that's from the community, that is snuck right up there behind traffic and growth. Right up there.
Particularly lately.
Ready to show support or not? Thumbs up to add it? Okay. The last one, how can, how can the council better encourage more citizens to provide their inputs, thoughts and inputs?
I had a very long question here, and then I backed off to this. This is just going back to hearing that community, well, from the council site, community engagement's important to us. We did the neighborhood engagement program. We're trying, trying, trying to get more voices to come to the table. During election season, hearing that it's still really hard to participate, that it's still really hard if you feel passionate about an issue, to track it all the way through, becomes a part-time job to some degree. So that's the long version of that short question.
So I think the, by saying specifically the city council, if you really know kind of the, it's, it's always, this is one where the city council and the administration absolutely team together, so I would just say city.
I would disagree. Because I think there are specific things that council members do in their, in their roles on committees as a chair, as, you know, we get emails, we chair committees, we, we are, we are responsible ourselves for how we engage with the public and how we may or may not be encouraging engagement, so...
But a two-part, how can the city and council? So that they can answer both ways.
But these questions are for a city council person, and I can't tell the mayor how to engage directly. So I think it's okay to say, city council at this point, that's what we're working with, so I'm okay with leaving that. I agree with you, the concept is there and we're gonna work together, but for this point, I'm okay with city council.
How can the... Can the council encourage more citizens to engage with the council? Or engage with the city? Wait, I don't know, it's...
I would go in a slightly different direction. I would say, how can the, how can the city council better solicit and incorporate citizen feedback? In other words, it's not, it's not us encouraging, come on, bring us your, you know, bring us your feedback. It's like, we should create mechanisms to engage the community, right? The responsibility's on us, not on the citizens.
So, so I'm thinking about this a little bit, and I'm also thinking that, at this point, I'm not sure I like G. Because we're kind of getting, it seems to me we're getting off track here. It's almost saying like, we know we have... I don't know. Got a lot of questions. And...
Thumbs up, thumbs down.
I don't, I'm not sure I'm wild about this one right now.
If I make a comment saying, I think with experience, what to do right here kind of grows with somebody. I think coming in cold, this would be, is probably a pretty difficult one to really know what's best. Because when Stacy was talking a moment ago, I was thinking, and fulfilling your duty as a council member, what would you do? You know, that's, that's, that would be amazing if they could give a good answer. So I'm in favor of leaving it out.
So I did throw one other point, just think about it, I'm okay with it really, but I think this gets to the point of that person then becoming an elected official in that role without having run to understand that it is an elected official position, and they should have, you know, had, if they hadn't run, they would have had some sort of engagement and process that would have helped them answer this question. So I have, I think it's good to leave it in. I'd prefer to leave it in, but I'm not gonna fight over it.
Let's just, let's just thumbs it.
I guess I'd only ask if Mary Lou, as the author of the proposed G, other, your thoughts on, maybe we're, what we might be missing in the reason for you suggesting it?
I actually really found what Bill just said completely compelling. This is an opportunity to serve your community, but you don't campaign to do it. You miss out on a huge connection opportunity that, well, that's not true. Some people who apply may have campaigned. So I take that back, I walk that back a little bit. But it, it does, I agree with Paul that until you sit here, maybe you don't know how to do this or not, I'm interested to hear what they're thinking. And some of them may point out the fact that their community experience that they currently have has given them a lot of opportunities to already engage. And I'd kind of like to know that, you know? Instead of just, I sit on this commission or I'm on my homeowner's board, maybe we'll find out that somebody's out there really connecting in ways that we don't, even though they didn't go through a campaign, and we'll hear about it. So I, I'm convinced very much by what Bill said that I, I like the question still. I'd like to keep it in. Vote.
We don't quite know what the question is yet, because we're writing it, but...
So the question, how can the city council better encourage more citizens to provide the thoughts and input are the same?
So this is the one that I'm suggesting, how can the city council better solicit and incorporate community feedback? Come with that.
Incorporate is what we have to do.
I say thumbs up or thumbs down on the second wording of that?
Mary Lou, what do you, as the author, what do you think of the...
I'm fine with both, so.
Need to be different. But it's, it's fine. I think the... Yeah, I like the second one better, I think.
You vote?
Let's vote on the second one. Do you, let's... How can the city council better solicit and incorporate community feedback? Thumbs up if you want to add it. Okay.
Ray.
I didn't.
Right.
No, I just...
Then is the next step to vote on the motion? Are you ready to vote on the motion?
I have a question.
Sure.
And are we clear that the instruction is gonna be that they choose 10 minutes, their 10-minute presentation is highlighting the parts of this that they consider most relevant to their appointment?
The wording that I added, and it can be tweaked, it just says, respond in writing to the following questions, limit to 150 words per question, and present to council the areas that are of most importance to you during the 10-minute interview.
Or presentation.
Presentation.
Yes, it's not an interview. There you go.
Well, there is a motion that has been seconded. We've had a very interesting discussion. Are you ready to vote on the motion? All those in favor for approving the process and timeline for filling the 2018 vacancy of position three as amended, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Sounds like that's unanimous. Any opposed? Seeing none then, that concludes our regular business item. We have a short executive committee meeting to discuss pending and potential litigation. No action is anticipated to follow in open session. No action is anticipated to follow in open session.